And thank you very much coming out of the break. Time now for our school board District 1 candidates and we have with us tonight Erica Black and Melissa Evans. And I'm sorry Erica Back, misprint there. Sometimes you've just got to go with what you know and what's in front of you. School Board District 1 will have opening statements and we'll start with Erica.
My name is Erica Back. I have been born and raised here. I played sports through school. This is my hometown. I'm Spartan Nation all the way. I have two boys that attend Fayette County. So I just want to be a part of, you know, the board and see what's going on and maybe make some changes along the way.
All right, thank you. Melissa?
Thanks, Sam. Hi, I'm Melissa Evans. I was also born and raised in Connersville. I went to school here, graduated from Connersville High School. I have a servant's heart, so I've known since I was five years old that I wanted to be a nurse. So I went away to college, went to the University of Indianapolis and got my bachelor's degree in nursing. And I came back to this community to start my career. I then met my husband Matt and we've had, we have three daughters. Our youngest is a senior this year, so my last one to get through the school system. So, you know, I finally, you know, pretty much raised my family, so I'm, my career is stable, so I'm ready to come back and serve our community and focus on our community.
All right, thank you very much. First question will be for Erica. What do you consider the most pressing issue facing our schools today and how will you address it?
The most pressing issue is we definitely have to get our teachers back in front of our students. Our test scores are showing that as they continue to go down. You know, as a student, I think it's very hard to first of all have to ask for a question, you know, and have a question. And then when you're not having your teacher in front of you and you're participating on a Google Chromebook or something, you know, maybe that opportunity is being missed, that our students are just not having enough time one-on-one with our teachers. And I think that is a huge thing that we need to get back to.
All right, thank you. Melissa, same question. What do you consider the most pressing issue facing our schools today and how would you address it?
I agree some with Erica, but I also think that right now our community is kind of suffering with our enrollment. Our enrollment's down and it's declining every single year. We need to work with the county and figure out ways to bring families to this community. We definitely need the kiddos in our, in our schools so that we can provide all those services, all the education for our kids.
All right, and next question, we'll stay with you. What is your stance on the inclusion in arts, the inclusion of arts and humanities in the curriculum and how will you ensure these subjects are adequately supported?
I do believe that they're very important. Our students need to be well-rounded, not to just focus on English and mathematics and science. We definitely need the arts. We need to be able to provide teachers that are educated and know how to, you know, teach our kids these things so that they can go out and find careers in, in all kinds of areas and bring those knowledge and bring that knowledge and skill back to our community.
Thank you. Erica, what is your stance on the inclusion of arts and humanities in the curriculum and how will you ensure that these subjects are adequately supported?
I think that they are very important for our students. You know, we want to send students off to whatever career path that they are going to choose, you know, whether that's entering the workforce right away or continuing on to college or something else. Having arts and humanities in there, that also helps them be a more rounded student when it comes to going through and beginning to get a job or going to that next level with the colleges and those things.
All right, and the next question is for you, let's start with. What are your plans for attracting and retaining high-quality teachers in our district?
I think that, you know, we really need to look at some budgets and really nail down some things. I think our teachers are, you know, being very well underpaid. You know, I feel that we need to get them back in front of these students and, you know, they are what is future, helping our kids mold them in our future. And I think their education is so important on who is in front of them and who is teaching our kids. And I feel like getting them more help, better, you know, pay, a lot more staff in there. I think that that is a big, big thing that we need to look at as a school district.
Thank you. And Melissa, what are your plans for attracting and retaining high-quality teachers in our district?
I do think the biggest goal we have is to retain our good teachers. And to do that, we do have to provide better pay, but we also have to give them the support that they need, whether that be education, just building them up so that they can get into the classrooms and come, come, bring in new ideas to our kiddos, be able to express, you know, all the new lines of thought, different strategies of teaching, get them excited to come back to, to the classroom and teach. Yeah, that support's very important.
All right, time, time for closing statements. This one's going by two people, goes by a lot faster than we had the council in here. But closing statements and we'll start with Melissa.
Yeah, so like I said in my opening statement, I have a servant's heart. I've come back to our community to serve. I look forward to this opportunity and I thank you all for, for looking at me as a candidate and supporting me. Thanks.
All right, thank you Erica.
You know, again, my name is Erica Back. I feel like I'm a really good candidate for this position, having, you know, two children on different extremes, one in a special education classroom with special needs and one in a general, general population. So I think I, you know, understand a little bit better seeing both worlds about budgets and what these kids need, the support the teachers need, the support the staff needs. You know, it, it all starts from the top and trickles down. And I just feel like I've been really blessed to see both sides of that with my boys. And so I'm just really excited to get involved and I hope you support me and vote for me.
Thank you very much. One of, one of you will represent, come January, will represent District 1, so best wishes to both of you. We'll be ready for District 2 in a moment. Thank you and we'll be right back. And we are back with school board District 2 candidates, Tim Bentley, Ashley Chambers, Leslie Jacobs, and Cambria Sparks. There's one open seat in District 2. We will start on my left with opening statements. Tim?
Hi, good evening. My name's Tim Bentley. Been a lifelong resident of Fayette County. Grew up in District 2 area, went to Everton School. Been involved in several different things here within the county and the city over my life, I guess. By trade, I've worked as an engineer in manufacturing for 25-plus years. I'm also a realtor. A lot of teachers in my family, my wife is a teacher, my son's a teacher, my sister, my brother-in-law, I've got grandkids that's going to be coming up through the schools. And to me, it's very important and I believe that this is a position that oftentimes gets overlooked. And I think it's time for change and I'm hoping me or one of us up here can bring that change that we need in a rapidly changing world. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ashley?
I wrote something down so I could stay on track. My name is Ashley Chambers and I come in front of you this evening as a candidate for Fayette County School Board District 2. I may be a new face to many of you as I'm not a lifelong resident of Fayette County. My husband Dino and I moved to Fayette County six years ago. We have made our home in Columbia Township where we raise our three children, one in middle school, one in elementary, and one in preschool. I decided to run for school board because our schools, once safe havens for learning, are facing new challenges. The radical changes you hear about in education nationally are happening right here. As a candidate, I am focused on guiding our district towards conservative values. We must protect our children's education, educational environment and bias, from bias and hidden agendas.
All right, thank you. Leslie?
Hi, I am Leslie Jacobs. I have served, I will have served two full terms on the Fayette County School Board. I've been president throughout those two terms. And then I served briefly from 2010 to 2012 when I was appointed to fill a vacancy. I have three daughters, all adults who attended Fayette County schools. All three successful, they had a good education. I live on my husband's family farm that has been in the family for over 200 years. And he and I ran a grass-fed dairy and we were the artisan cheese company in Fayette County for 12 years until his passing last year. Since then, I still operate the family farm. I raise beef and sheep. I also have a day job, another job, which is being a licensed clinical social worker and I've been practicing in Fayette County for 33 years. I currently live at home with my three dogs, the very most important individuals in my life in Fayette County, and they are Rex, Chet, and Anwin, two border collies and a corgi.
All right, thank you very much. Cambria?
Hi, I'm Cambria Sparks and I have been a resident of Fayette County for 43 years now. I currently work with the Indiana Department of Veterans Affairs with helping veterans out with getting their benefits. I am currently in the Indiana National Guard, been in for 18 years now, serving my country. I have two grown children, one's currently in the Army and one's currently at college. So they're out of the house and on their own. They both grew up in Connersville, went to school in Connersville, went through the school system here too. I have nieces and nephews from kindergarten all the way up through middle school, so they're going through the school system now too. Other than that, I volunteer within the community doing sports, church, other things like that. So I've got a lot of free time on my hands and want to start giving back to the community now.
All right, thank all four of you. First question will be for Tim. What do you consider the most pressing issue facing our schools today and how will you address it?
I think, in my opinion, obviously, one of the, probably the biggest issues we have in today's society, I think, is safety. You know, like I said, I've got a lot of family that are teachers. My wife is a teacher in Richmond. They've been on lockdown four times already this year. I think Ashley mentioned some of the, mentioned a little bit about changes in our society and I believe we see it on the news, but they're happening here in Fayette County. I've got a granddaughter that'll be entering kindergarten next year and it concerns me as a citizen, as a grandfather, that these kids are scared to death to go into the buildings. They're, they're on edge. And, you know, they talk about things when they hear mom and dad or they see something on the news, it concerns them. And I think we have to make that first and foremost priority, making sure our students feel safe, they feel like they're in a good learning environment. We have to make sure our teachers feel safe at whatever expense we can. I know several of my family members have mentioned that a number of students are pulling out right now to be homeschooled and online and different things like that because they don't have confidence in our school systems. Because they want their kids to be safe, they want to make sure nothing happens, there's no harm. And I think that's first and foremost right now is that we make sure that we have a good, safe environment where kids and teachers can learn and work and can meet every day together in a positive environment.
Thank you. Ashley?
I do agree with him on the safety, but I'm going to take a different approach on this. One challenge in our district that our, that our district faces and stands out to me is the decreasing number of students enrolled in Fayette County public schools. We are not just decreasing because there are less children in the district. We are also presented with many families choosing neighboring school districts as well as homeschooling. As a school district, we need to come together and dig deeper into why families are not choosing to raise their children here in Fayette County. We need to find reasoning why families are choosing to commute their children to Liberty, Brookville, Rushville, instead of sending their children to the school district in which they reside in. We also need to look at reasons why families are choosing to homeschool over public education. There needs to be a resolution made to keep children in Fayette County School District. As a school district at whole, I feel like we need to do better.
All right, thank you. Leslie, what do you consider the most pressing issue facing our schools today and how will you address it?
So I want to put that in two parts. The way the question is presented is facing our schools, so not just Fayette County schools. And I will say from that standpoint, the pandemic has challenged all schools throughout the United States and probably abroad, but in tremendous ways. The learning loss has been tremendous. Fortunately, in Fayette County, we pivoted and we tried to do some online schooling along with regular in-building schooling. And we continue to try to implement programs to abate some of that learning loss. That's a national problem. On the local level, I agree with the declining enrollment. Unfortunately, it's declining throughout rural areas in Indiana, excuse me, especially on the east side of the state. The doughnut areas around Indianapolis, no problem, those are growing. But we face tremendous problems. We lose about 50 students a year. We just hired a brand-new superintendent who came from one of the only districts on the east side of Indiana that had increased enrollment. So we're looking forward to some new initiatives and ways that we can improve that, that, those numbers in our buildings. But there are a lot of challenges before us. And having listened to the county council prior, we are really hand-strung by the legislature. All of our money comes from the state and we have to really be creative in how we use our budgets. We have saved money over the years, tremendous money. In the last eight years, we saved over $150,000 from our budget by attrition and not hiring, not having heavy admin staff. And we continue to work on that every day. We have challenges with maintaining appropriate compensation for our teachers. We have a wonderful relationship with our teachers' union and we continue to find ways and we've had increases in salaries over the last two years that have been fairly monumental and very, very effective for our teachers. In the area, we have the best insurance for the cheapest rate and, but we, we can always improve. There's always room for improvement. There are many challenges. You know, schools were created for students to learn. That is the bottom line. Our number one job is to matriculate students, to get them from one grade to the next and where they're learning. And we have challenges in that department too, in ways to enhance learning, not just the pandemic, but just ways. We are a high-poverty district and that presents challenges. And we've met some of those challenges by starting preschool, by having an alternative school. And we continue to try to be creative, but the challenges exist and we continue to try to tackle those.
Thank you. Cambria, what do you consider the most pressing issue facing our schools today and how will you address it?
I think all three had, you know, great comments, but I think the biggest thing is actually getting our kids to graduate, the graduation rate and getting those kids ready for life after high school. I think that's the biggest thing and getting them ready for, you know, whether it be college or a job, that's the biggest thing. And I think getting them there is going to have, we need to have better programs for them. Math is great, but I think we need financial classes for them, having them ready to tackle, I'm trying to think of the word I'm looking for, how to balance a checkbook, how to apply for a loan, how to do those sort of things, life skills like that. They need to be able to do things like that outside of their core classes. Classes like that, they need to be prepared for. That's what I think that needs to be done in those classes outside of history, science, health, things like that. We need to prepare them for things like that outside of core classes.
All right, thank you. Next question will go to Ashley. What is your stance on the inclusion of arts and the humanities in the curriculum and how will you ensure these subjects are adequately supported?
I feel like, I feel like giving our kids, you said arts, correct? Can I hear the question again?
The arts, yes. The arts and humanities, you know, music and drama and those types of things possibly.
I feel like they have, we have to have programs and classes, extracurricular activities for our students, like music, band, art. Children can't just go in the classroom and learn, sit at a desk, learn math, writing. I know those are the most important, English, math, but they have to have somewhere else to express themselves on a deeper level. I think that that's good for mental health and I feel like that that's where we're lacking a lot in the district or schools in general and kids. You know, a lot of kids, social media, texts, they don't know how to communicate. When you put them in extracurricular activities like band, they put their phones down, they talk, they communicate, they enjoy playing their instrument or, you know, drawing, stuff like that. So yes, I definitely feel like we need to continue to have those classes even from kindergarten all the way through. We need to offer those.
All right, thank you. Leslie, same questions. What is your stance on the inclusion of arts and humanities in the curriculum and how will you ensure these subjects are adequately supported?
Well, that's a great question. And we've had some declining enrollment in our band program. That's been very challenging. We had some trouble getting enough kids to do, oh my goodness, the flags.
Guard.
Collar guard, or guard, just guard. Yeah, getting kids to do guard. And a lot of, you know, with sports, you have feeder programs, so you have those things happening. Obviously, you don't have guard on an earlier basis and we don't involve band until sixth grade, kids get involved in that. We have wonderful educators in those departments. One thing that has happened more recently in the community between the Art Association, Imagine, the Imagine Performers, they are now helping out some of our programming. We've had the newspaper enlist kids to help write some articles. We do art shows of our, our kids in art at the Art Association. They have regular showings of those, their productions. And I think that building that in the community has been a wonderful step. I think that is going to help us because we know that we have to have things across the board. If you have strong public communities, you have strong public schools. So I think we're doing a good job by having, you know, excellent teachers, but we can always do more to try to recruit children, to get them involved at an earlier age. As I said before, the legislature dictates almost everything we do, from our curriculum, how much time teachers have to spend on different subject matter. I recently read an article, it wasn't Fayette County, it was actually in our paper though, that some schools in teaching literature are having to only have the kids read like the first three or four chapters and then the rest is just summarized because the state has all these standards that they have to teach and there's not enough time in the schedule. So some of this is also, are also things we have to advocate on the legislative level. Currently, I serve as the Region Six Director for the Indiana School Board Association and I've been on the Indiana School Board Association's Legislative Committee. And just as members of the county council said, our work as school board members is definitely in our community. That is where 90% of our work is. However, we realize that our money comes from somewhere else. And so if we want programs like the arts enhanced, we have to be talking to our legislatures about more money because we really don't receive enough money to run all the programs to the extent we want to. We have done, you know, to get marching band uniforms, that couldn't be funded by the school. That had to go to the community in order to seek funding for that. So unfortunately, so much is limited through that, that obstacle. However, I think our teachers do a great job and I love this connection between the community and the schools and I think that's really going to help.
All right, thank you. Cambria, what is your stance on the inclusion of arts and humanities in the curriculum and how will you ensure these subjects are adequately supported?
I do agree that getting them involved at an early age benefits them and encourages them to continue going on. Like Leslie said, band starts at sixth grade and continues on and it is a decline in band with kids from sixth grade on up to high school. Just getting them involved at an early age and continuing that is crucial. And I do intend to try to help as much as possible to continue that and start with the community and continue doing that. Like she said, the Imagine performing arts is a good thing and continuing that and doing as much as I can to help with the community.
All right, thank you. Tim, I guess you didn't get to answer that question.
Not yet.
All right. What is your stance on inclusion of arts and humanities in the curriculum and how will you ensure these subjects are adequately supported?
Well, I definitely think we need to make them a priority. I mean, the core classes are important, but been in management and manufacturing for 25 years, it is important to read, write, and those kind of things, but there are so many of these kids that are coming out. I think Cam mentioned life skills and such. When I was sitting out in the hallway, I heard county council talking about job creation and things like that. It's important that we give these kids every touch that they can touch as far as opportunities and stuff, whether that be, you know, band or music or art or whether it be, you know, some type of vocational or something. I was talking to a friend of mine, their school actually starts vocational in ninth grade and they rotate every year. We only allow our kids to go in junior, in 11th grade and they go for two years, but I think that's a good idea to let those kids go all four years and rotate different classes. It gives them a great exposure to different things. Some kids aren't college material, but you know, county council can have all the plans that they want. But I'm here to tell you right now, if whoever is on this school board is not directing these students to be productive citizens, it isn't going to matter. We're going to fail as a city, we're going to fail as a school district. We have to make these kids ready to not just be book smart, to not just be smart behind a screen, but they've got to be ready to be our next business people. They've got to be ready to be our next entrepreneurs and so forth. And so I think it's very important that we do that. And I get the money comes from the state, but keep in mind folks and people of Fayette County, our schools get a very, very large sum of money. I was looking earlier today on Indiana Gateway, I think in '23, we got over $60 million here in Fayette County. That's more than our county council, that was up here talking just a little bit ago, and our city combined. So these school board members carry a great deal of responsibility and physicality of dealing with our funds. So when we talk about the arts and stuff like that and giving our kids opportunities, we need to make sure those are available. The money's there. And I was talking to some teachers and now that I'm running and stuff, a lot of people will talk to me, they'll tell me different things. And it's my understanding right now that we don't have an art teacher at the middle school. That's inexcusable. Those students should have every opportunity for those programs and we as board members ought to make sure they're available to them. And I can promise, if I'm elected to this seat, I will be listening to you parents, families, teachers, and I'll do everything I can to make sure those programs are in place, if it means cutting from somewhere else. We have to put that $60 million in the classrooms to benefit the students, to benefit our community and our state. It just has to work that way. There's no other way. There's no other way to do it. And I, folks, you got my commitment that I will be part of that solution. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next question's for Leslie, excuse me. How will you address issues related to bullying and mental health support within the schools?
Wow. You've hit on my number one thing. You know, I'm a clinical social worker. I see mental health issues every day, the increase in anxiety and depression in teenagers and children. It is out of control. And it is recommended that you have, I think it's one school counselor for every 250 kids, and we're at about 500 per counselor. First of all, one thing that we need to work on is getting kids, getting our graduates or any young people out there to go into school counseling because it's incredibly difficult to find school counselors anymore. We now hire social workers. We have Meridian and Centerstone in our schools. We have a contract with them. And we continue to struggle to find, to keep up with the mental health challenges, and we work on those every single day. What was the first part of your question before the mental health?
Bullying.
Bullying. So, there are tremendous issues with conflict. And our teachers and our principals do work every day to try to manage those difficulties. Do they still happen? Yeah, they do. We have invested a lot of dollars into programs. I just participated in a program at the middle school, and I've participated, this was my third year. It's called Challenge Day, where they bring in speakers, and they, all eighth graders attend, and it's a full-day program, and it is exactly about that. It's about understanding what's going on in everybody's life, so that, you know, kind of that notion of be kind, you never know what's going on in somebody's life. And they explore a range of topics with these eighth graders. And what was amazing about that day was the openness that these kids had to share some of the difficulties they had in their life. So, then they come to school after having tremendous amount of problems at home, and where do those problems end up coming out at school? And it may be bullying, but it may also be depression. It may be anxiety, not being able to sit through a class. So, we are challenged every day to address those and to continue to come up with programs like Challenge Day to help our students directly, not, and then the other piece of needing to hire people that are trained in counseling, which is becoming very difficult to do. It's almost impossible now to find a school psychologist. Schools always had psychologists. We had a school psychologist, Dick Leiter, for years and years. He was probably here for, I don't know, 40, 50 years. I mean, he's still in the community, but he's not serving in that capacity. We have psychometrists now, and those are people that can do testing, but they're not psychologists. But, one, you can't find those people that do school psychology, and the dollars to have them are very difficult to come by. We do as much as we can, and we continue to work on that.
All right. Thank you. So, Cambria, how will you address issues related to bullying and mental health support within the schools?
Well, this is a very close subject to me, just because my son is one that experienced bullying at Grandview. So, with the bullying issue, I think that we need to take stricter disciplinary actions against bullying. I don't think that our school system takes strict, how do I put this? I don't think we take disciplinary actions against the bullies. So, I think that when the bullying is going on, I think that we need to take stricter disciplinary actions against the bullies. And I think that the parents need to be brought into that disciplinary actions also. If it continues happening, I think those parents need to be brought in to that. There needs to be some repercussions with the parents also. And I think that it doesn't need to be just, let's let this kid go back to school, or let's switch this kid to a different school. Let's start having some disciplinary actions for this child. With the mental health, yes, I agree that there are mental health issues that we need to face. I'm in the military. The mental health crisis is crucial in the United States. Like Leslie said, there's not enough people in the United States to tackle this mental health crisis. Like she said, yes, we need to get people hired, and we need to start getting these graduates to start going into the mental health field. We need to find some way to incentivize these students to go into the mental health field and try to keep them here in Fayette County, and to get them to work in our school systems, to help these children that are having anxiety, depression, even PTSD. We need to find some way to keep these high school graduates in Fayette County to help us with this crisis. And if we can do that, that's going to help our community and our school system. I don't know what way we can do that, but we need to find some way to do that.
Okay. Thank you. So, next question goes to Tim then.
I didn't answer this one.
You didn't, well, that's what, that's.
Neither did Ashley. Neither did Ashley, I don't think.
No, I hadn't got, yeah, yeah. Anyway, how will you address issues of bullying and mental health support within the schools?
Okay. So, anyways, I agree with what was said previously. On the topic of bullying, I 100% agree with Cam. We don't address it swiftly enough. Now, I know we can't do it, but I can tell you, I was a recipient, when I was in school, of a wooden board across my tail end, and I really think that would help. But I know in the state that we're in today, we can't do that. But a lot of these kids, they don't get a lot of direction at home. As a matter of fact, they probably get very little interaction at home. Mom and dad's working, they're left to run, to run the castle, if you will. And I think that's a lot of the issue. We're not, you know, the kids aren't getting one-on-one. Kids don't grow up to be bad kids. They don't grow up and say, I want to be a bad kid. It's because they're not getting the guidance and direction. But like I said, you know, I got a lot of family that are teachers, and this is something that gets talked about often at the dinner table, is that they feel like it's a yo-yo with these kids and bullying and discipline and stuff, that, you know, they'll have a kid interrupt their class, they send them to the principal's office, and the principal office smacks them on the hands and sends them back. You know, that's inexcusable. If these kids want to keep acting up, we ought to have a three-strike rule or whatever and say, listen, you've crossed the line. We're going to expulsion now, okay? You've crossed that line. You're no longer going to be in this school. You need to be homeschooled or whatever. We can't let these kids interrupt the education of the kids that want to learn. And you've got teachers that are getting extremely frustrated because they can't teach, because half of their day is being interrupted by these issues. Some of these kids even feel like it's a game. You know, if they don't want to learn, do this particular subject or activity, they know, they're like, well, I'll get up and flip that chair over. I'll get sent to the principal's office, and I don't have to do it. And that's inexcusable. If those kids continue to have that behavior, it needs to be addressed more swiftly. You know, mental health, I get, is an issue. We do need to have those people to address those things, to help those kids. But again, those interruptions in the classroom needs to be minimized. If those kids need to be pulled out or have some special services or something, we need to be doing that. I think that's a big reason why we're having decline in enrollment. You've got families, it's like, listen, I don't want little Johnny or little Susie having to be interrupted five times a day because Billy has a tenter tantrum. It's affecting everything. We've got to make some changes. Now, I will say in wrapping up here, one of the greatest assets that I believe I had, Sam, you probably, and others in this room, was having mentors. I remember through high school, I can probably count a dozen teachers that I know went over and above what they should have as a teacher, to invest in me, to say, Tim, what are you going to do with your life? You know, Tim, hey, that wasn't, that wasn't cool what you did. And they explained why. And we need more of that. We need, if the parents aren't going to do it, we need teachers, and the teachers are bogged down, they don't really have time, but we need community members, we need whatever faculty that can, we need administrators, we need board members that comes in. Years ago, in Richmond, when I worked there, I was part of a program that was a mentorship, and we went into some of the schools. And it was kind of funny, one of the first students I got, I don't know if you guys remember Kathy McCarty, but she worked in the corporation. She was a principal up at Dennis, and she said, boy, Tim, do I have the student for you. And I won't say his name, but a kid that, you know, he had some issues, but he and I had some similarities. And over that year that I got to mentor with him, I'd bring him in lunch, hey, how's it going? What, you know, I heard you had a breakdown today. You know, that's what these kids need. These kids, like I said, they don't wake up in the morning and say, I want to be bad. But they need influence, they need interaction, and they need somebody willing to invest in them. And we as a community, like I said, county council and all those guys can say, hey, we're doing this, this, and this, but it doesn't matter if our youth aren't prepared to take the baton when it's their turn. We have to make sure they're equipped, that they're ready, they're focused, and that means us investing in them today to get them ready. So.
All right. Thank you. So, Ashley, how will you address issues related to bullying and mental health support within the schools?
One of my priorities include ensuring safe and healthy learning environments. That also includes parental rights in the educational system. I believe students need to have their parents involved, and that probably starts way back in elementary or even the preschool. I know the preschool program offers a lot of little activities that parents come in and do. The elementary does that, too. I think we need to keep our parents involved so they continue to parent their children. I feel like our children lack communication skills these days. They text, they use social media, and that makes them callous, it makes them have anxiety, it makes them have depression, it makes them think, a text that you read one way, somebody else will read it and take it a whole different other way. So, I feel like we need to teach our children to communicate better, put the screen time down, and learn to interact with each other. I feel like the mental health crisis is upon everywhere, but our schools, the children in the school are being left behind when it comes to that. I feel like we just sweep it under the rug a lot of times, and we don't get them the true help they need. If they don't have the help at home, we need to find them help at school. It may not be able to be a social worker or a school psychologist. We need to at least find the, find people in the community that can have some basic training to help children, just to talk to them, just to give them some everyday advice to keep, you know, to express their feelings. And, you know, that also has to do with the bullying. I feel like kids need to be held accountable at a young age and keep that going all through high school. If we don't hold them accountable at a young age, they're not going to be held accountable. They're going to be out of control by middle school and high school. So, I feel like kids need consequences. I know that he's mentioned like expulsion and stuff. I know at the legislation level, you can't just expel a kid these days like you could before. They want children to stay in school, so they're not going to let you just kick them out of school for reasons. But I do feel like we need to involve the parents more and hold the children accountable.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to our final question here, and we'll start with Cambria on this one. How would you handle conflicts and disagreements among board members or between the board and district administration?
Well, I think that it needs to be done behind closed doors, not publicly, and it should be done in a mature manner. And I think that it should be done without tempers being risen as adults. We're all adults. We can, we can sit here and talk privately, and we all have difference of opinions. And we can sit here and discuss it, and at the end of the day, you have an opinion, I have an opinion. We can sit here and talk about it, and we can walk away from the conversation as adults. And at the end of the day, we vote about it, and as long as it's ethically and morally right, as long as we vote, and as long as the board votes about it, and if us four vote, I'm outvoted, as long as it's ethically and morally right, if I'm outvoted, I can go with the board.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Tim, how would you handle conflicts and disagreements among board members or between the board and the administration, the district administration?
Well, Sam, I'm a little shy. I don't like conflict, but I'm just teasing. I agree with Cam. I think we're adults. We have to be professional. We have to be respectful of everybody. I think if we do have some disagreements, we need to do it one-on-one with those particular people. We need to discuss our disagreements and things, and try to keep it private if possible. You know, I think the community needs to know the board is unified and that we're not out to get anyone or out to trip anybody up or anything like that. And there is going to be times, like Cam said, that we vote differently. And I'll be honest, that's one of my concerns now as a board, as I see the school board, is you don't always have to vote yes. And I think the administration needs to understand that there's a lot of us parents that are concerned. That's why there's so many of us running. And I think if the citizens of Fayette County elect some of us, you're going to start seeing some no votes on the board. Administration needs to understand that, listen, we're not there to rock the boat, but we're there because we want change. We're concerned with our, the outcome, with graduation rates being low, enrollments rates being low, all these issues we talked about, bullying, mental health and stuff. We're concerned about all these. So, yes, there may be times that we don't always agree, but we can, we can agree to disagree. We can say, hey, we're all in it together, we're all in it for the same outcome, and at the end of the day, it's okay if the majority, you know, outvoted on this particular topic or whatever. And the same way with the administration, you know, I think we've all got the same end goal. But I think the administration needs to understand that the way the election process is set up for a member to be voted in in each district, we're there to represent our district. And they need to understand there's going to be times that we may not, we may not agree with the direction that they're going, and we may not want to go along with that. But that's why we have a board, and that's why we have a vote. And so, but at the end of the day, I think we all have to be unified, like-minded, and professionals, and, you know, willing to discuss in a professional manner.
All right. Thank you. Ashley, how would you handle conflicts and disagreements among board members or between the board and the administration?
I feel like as a board, there's seven members on the board. You work as a team, but you also work to make decisions in the best interest of the students, the teachers, the staff. And we need to have constructive conflict where somebody can voice their opinion on why they're voting no or voting yes, and others are not going the same way as them. But at the end of the day, everybody does vote, and the majority wins, or, you know, the majority, it goes the majority way. So, handling conflict, I don't think there is actual like conflict. I feel like you work through it, and we represent each, our district, and we, basically, we need to make sure we give us the children what they need, because kids come first. And I don't, I don't really, I'm not a conflict person, so, but I do have my own opinions on things, and I will stand up for what I believe in. And if I don't agree, I won't agree. I'm not going to follow suit with whatever everybody else does. does.
All right, thank you. Leslie, how would you handle conflicts and disagreements among board members or between the board and administration?
Well, one thing I want to say, share, is that what the public sees at a board meeting is the result of lots of conversations and information prior to that board meeting. So in the example of voting yes or no, it's generally known, a superintendent nor a board member likes surprises. So superintendent is not going to bring something up at a meeting without having properly vetted it with the board. We receive regular communications. On anything that might involve money, we get tremendous amount of resources to read, to research, and if we have a disagreement or we don't like something, generally, that is expressed when it's presented to us, when we're provided with the information, and the superintendent seeks that feedback, and we provide that. And that's done in person, that's done through our weekly communication, so that when we come to a meeting, when the superintendent is presenting something, he or she, in our case, he, has an idea if that is something that the board even wants to do. It's not that the board has made any decision prior, but the information has been presented. And if there are a lot of dissenting opinions, then the superintendent isn't going to bring that before the board, because that wouldn't make any sense. So when the public sees people do a yes vote, and they see predominantly yes votes, and believe that it's just a rubber stamp, what they're not aware of is all the work that's gone up prior to that time period, where there's been a lot of expression of both positive and negative. And board members generally let the superintendent, "No, I can't vote for that." And so, the superintendent knows ahead of time. If there were four board members who said, "Well, I don't like this idea," superintendent's not going to present it. So I think that kind of gets missed, and people aren't aware of that perhaps, how much communication, how much information we receive, that we choose, if, if you want to be that kind of board member, to read it all, and pay attention, and look at the numbers. In terms of conflict among board members, that, too, is generally taken care of behind closed doors. It can go on for a long period of time, and unfortunately, it sometimes does go on for a long period of time. When it violates a policy, when there is concern about litigation, we have vehicles under which we, that we can utilize in order to address those, and those are called our executive sessions. And those are held in private, those are not public, those pertain, we are only allowed by state statute to hold executive sessions under certain circumstances, but a board can hold many of those in trying to address conflict. When conflict is not addressed, is not fully resolved during those meetings, there are times that conflict does come out in the board. Now, one thing I will say about our board compared to many boards, and I've watched lots of board meetings from other boards, I've had lots of communication with other board members, there are some really contentious boards that every meeting are arguing. And we're talking about arguing, not just having a difference of an opinion. And some school boards think that that's totally appropriate, and it can get very heated. Our board has never had a heated argument within a board meeting about a topic that the superintendent has brought forth that wasn't, I mean, we've never had anything that got that heated. We've resolved anything behind closed doors. There are occasions where it hasn't been resolved, but in terms of the monthly meetings with our every month decisions that we have to make, we don't have that kind of conflict. And as everybody has stated, if you don't, if you're not in the majority, and that, whatever it is passes, and you didn't choose to have it pass, to a person, every board member goes on about their business, and we move forward. So I think we have a good mechanism to manage conflict. I just think that a lot of people aren't aware how much work goes on behind the scenes. Sometimes it can be months, it can also sometimes be longer than that. And generally, there's a resolution found.
All right, thank you. Time for closing statements. Cambria?
Well, I'm just Cambria Sparks, and I want to make change within the Fayette County School District. Vote for me.
All right, thank you. Tim?
My turn, all right. You know, I think we all are here because, you know, we care. This isn't a lucrative position. The money that it pays is not nowhere near worth the time. We're all here because we've got family, kids, grandkids, we've got a vested interest. And, you know, as I close, you know, I'm going to mention a few things real quick, and I'll be as quick as I can. I know, you know, we've got other elections coming up with council and stuff, and one of the things I hear is, you know, we, we need more jobs, we need more money, we need more tax base and stuff like that. You know, I mentioned, I, I've worked in manufacturing 25 years, I've been involved in planting a lot of companies, I've worked in supplier development many of those years, and I'll tell you, there's two things. When companies are looking to locate, and I know we just landed one, and I hope it turns out to be a great asset for Connersville, but there's two things during my career that I've seen companies want whenever they're looking for a town to move to, and the number one thing they look for is schools. That's the number one thing they're looking at. So not only do we have a physical responsibility to be stewards of this money, but if we want to attract more business, if we want our students to be more productive in the, in society, that starts with us board members, that starts with us setting the marching beat. And, and I want to be part of that solution. The second thing they look for is quality of life. You know, they look, what is there around the community to, to do as their shopping centers? Is there, is there Walmarts, is there bowling alleys, movie theaters? You know, they look for, what can we do as a family, quality of life? And I know that one's really not in our control, but that number one, school, that, that lies on us, and we have to be a leader and part of that solution. You know, a couple other things that, that I want to mention, we've got to do better. I know that council has done a great deal here, the board is working with salaries and stuff, but we got to get our teacher salaries up. You know, a lot of our teachers are coming in teaching, on average, making about $50,000 a year. We know the cost of living is going up on everything. We got to do better. We're paying subs $80 a day. We got to do better. It costs them $15 a day to put gas in their car, $10 for lunch. Taxes, by the end of the day, they might bring home $40 a day. It's not worth them getting out of bed dealing with these issues for $80 a day. We have a very high ratio of aides at Fayette County. We're using a lot of those aides, we're pulling them from Title I and different things to sub. We shouldn't be doing that. We need to make sure that we've got a sub base, we're letting those aides teach. We're also pulling our teachers out of their prep time to sub. Again, shouldn't be happening. These teachers have a load of stuff on them now, and those are things that we're tasked as a board with, is making sure that we fix. And, you know, those are just a few of the things that, that I'm willing to commit to, that I've heard that I'm willing to commit to try to be part of the solution, because like I said, I've got a vested interest. I've got two grandkids, hopefully more in the future, boys, if you're listening. But, you know, I care about this community. I care about these schools and the future of our kids, and that they are productive citizens, that they're our next business owners, doctors, nurses, entrepreneurs, psychologists, whatever, but it starts with us. And I'm going to ask, you know, there's, there's four great choices up here. Number one, exercise your right and vote, get out and vote. We have extremely low voter turnout, folks. Get out and vote. I don't care which one of you vote for, I think we all care, I think we all want what's best, but get out and vote. But if you want to vote for the best, I ask you, vote for me. Just kidding, I'm a little biased, but that's all I got, Sam.
All right, thanks a lot, Tim. Ashley, closing comments?
As a school board candidate, I'm prepared to speak up and serve as an advocate for public education in our community. I have a background in early childhood education, where I taught pre-K, and I was an assistant director. I also have a nursing background, where I worked in pediatrics at Dayton Children's Medical Center in the nursing field. I have been a successful business owner and an administrator of a construction company. No, I do not have a long history of public education, but I do bring a mother's perspective to the table, and believe being a parent with children in the district, I can facilitate open communication channels between the superintendent, the board, and the community. I'm willing to pursue the skills and knowledge and the training necessary to become fully engaged and effective board member. The election's November 5th, and your vote matters. As a candidate, I am focused on guiding our district in a positive outlook for our future. Your vote is crucial. It is a decision that will help shape the future direction of our schools. Let's ensure our education system remains positive for the future of our children and our community.
All right, thank you. Leslie, wrap it up with you.
Yeah. Well, it's been interesting to hear everybody's perspective, and I agree with Tim that I think anybody that runs for school board, us four, the other candidates are doing it because they care about kids, which is the number one priority. Being a school board member is a lot of work. There's a lot of materials that I think personally, we should, we should be looking at, we should be reading, we should be very aware of what's happening at the state level. That's where our money comes from. Education is one of the top funded, but not always receiving the dollars. There's a lot of mandates that come from the state that we are required to fulfill, we don't have a choice. And so, I believe we have to be active on that level as well. One of the skills I think I bring to the school board is being a problem solver. I have been a social worker for 33 years. The best advice I got was when I first came on the board, and Carl Hilton, who was, I mean, is a stellar man, a wonderful educator, and a great board member, and generally, when new people come on the board, somebody mentors them from the board, and he was my mentor. And the main message he gave me is, there are many sides to an issue. There's not just two sides, well, there's certainly not one side. There are not just two sides. There can be three, there can be four, and when you're involving students, absolutely. You know, there's teachers, there's parents, there's the state, there's the school board, there's administration. Everybody has their opinion about what's the best thing and the best direction to go in, and we have to listen. We have to listen to all that information, and we have to read all the materials, we have to attend the meetings. There is a lot asked of school board members. We need to get into the schools for all the programs and the events that take place, and the athletics. There's, there's a lot of demands on school board members. So I feel that's what I offer the board, that's what I've been doing. My role with the Indiana School Board Association has given me a unique opportunity to interface with lots of folks throughout the state that serve on school boards, and some of the challenges that they manage, along with, you know, sharing some of the challenges that our district manages. The problems that we've all raised, from mental health to declining enrollment, graduation rate, those things we're tackling every day. We have the best staff. I mean, I can't praise, from our teachers to our admin, to our custodians, to our bus drivers. You know, Tim's comment about not finding enough subs, we've been very fortunate to have enough bus drivers, but there were, there have been school corporations that have started without bus drivers. I think it was last year or the year before, Richmond started without 20 teachers. Fayette County has pretty much started every year with, with a teacher in every classroom, but we're having struggles finding people to fill a lot of those positions. And, and, you know, that's true. So we have to continue to support the people that are doing the great work. Every day, those teachers are faced with challenges, our administrators are faced with challenges, and by golly, they, they just go at it. They, they don't blink an eye. They may be frustrated, I get it, they are oftentimes frustrated, but they show up the next day with a smile on their face. The best day in school is that first day. Well, actually, I don't know, registration was pretty exciting. I went to a couple of schools, and the kids are so eager, parents are probably a little bit eager, too, for school to start, but when you go into a school and you see those kids, I don't care what level it is, at high school, when they're laughing on the courtyard, or, you know, hanging out with their friend at a lunch table, to those little elementary kids who are coming up and tugging on you, I mean, that's the best feeling in the world. And I, we owe it, we owe it to the people that work in our schools, and I think that by and large, we're doing a great job. Do we have challenges? Absolutely, I'd be the first to say it. And I feel like my main job is to help ensure that students are successful, that, and, and that's with all the challenges, with the mental health, with our declining enrollment and children leaving our district. And I think we continue to do that work, and it's work every day. So I'm up for the task, I've, I've been passionate about this work. I love education, I love everything that we do. People say, "School board is a thankless job." I don't believe it, I don't buy it. School board has a lot of rewards, and maybe it's internal, just knowing that we're doing the work, but every day you see those kids and you see a success, you just are grateful. So that's what I'd say, and I, I hope that the people in my district vote for me.
All right, thank you. One of these four will be elected to school board, and wish you all the best, and appreciate you coming out tonight. And we'll be right back with School Board District Three after this. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
to remind the viewers that Election Day is Tuesday, November 5th. Voting centers will be open from 6:00 a.m. through 6:00 p.m. and are located at five locations: Baptist Temple, Baptist Temple Gymnasium, the courthouse, New Heights Church, Miller Center, Banquet Hall, and the Keener Building in Everton. Fayette County Courthouse will also be taking early voting, beginning October the 8th. We now turn to the candidates for School Board District Two. There are two open seats in this district. Our candidates include, and some of them unable to be here tonight, but our candidates include Joseph Bunyard, Jared Glaub, Sasha Henderson, Dustin Munson, Darren Price, Leanna Torres, and Jeremy Williams. We have with us tonight Dustin, Darren, and Jeremy. Welcome, gentlemen, glad, glad you could be here.
Thank you.
We'll start with opening state statements, and we'll start with Dustin.
I'm Dustin Munson, I'm running for school board. I'm married for seven years, I've got a son, he'll be starting school next year, so I just thought I should probably get involved and see if we can make some changes and, and make the school a little nicer, a little better.
All right, thank you. Darren?
Hi, I'm Darren Price, I'm running District Three. I've been married to my wonderful wife Teresa for 34 years, have seven kids and three grandkids. Through, I still have three kids in Fayette County schools, and I just think I can offer some fresh ideas to the board.
All right, Jeremy?
My name is Jeremy Williams, I'm a lifetime resident here of Fayette County, lived about 10 years, married, wife and I have four kids, one granddaughter, so I've been on the school board currently for the last, this is the fourth year, so I'm hoping to seek, to reelection again. Some of the things about myself, engineering degree with bachelor's degree in engineering, and MBA from Indiana Wesleyan as well, so some of the things I bring to the table that maybe the others don't is, I have an entire field or history of, work history of manufacturing, which has, you know, most of the, you know, big portion of the population works in manufacturing in one form or another. So that's some of the skill set I do bring to the table that not a lot of other people do on the board, so I'm hoping to seek to continue and get reelected again.
All right. Thank you, Jeremy. First question will go to Dustin. What do you consider the most pressing issue facing our schools today, and how will you address it?
Um, I believe we need to make sure that we have good staff, that we've got, that there's plenty of the staff to help the students. It sounds to me, there's a lot of kids that have trouble in school, and there's kind of like larger classrooms, so they can't get the little extra help they need. So if we could add a little bit of staff, if it's possible by the budget, I believe that'd be a good option to look at to try to help the students, because that's our ultimate goal, is to make the students better when they graduate.
All right, thank you. Darren, what do you consider the most pressing issue facing our schools today, and how will you address it?
Uh, I, I think I'm kind of like Jeremy. I think retaining qualified staff and getting hopefully some of our graduates from CHS to go to school to be educators and come back and, and help teach here at Connersville. If there are incentives out there that we If there are incentives out there that we can help with those students, I would love to look at those and, and help those students out and get them back here teaching.
All right. Thank you. Jeremy, what do you consider the most pressing issue facing our schools today, and how would you address them?
True, teachers are, retention is a big number one issue, but also with the declining enrollment, the finances, the budgeting and everything for us to, to have teachers. We've already made strides in raising teachers' pay and benefits. We're probably one of the highest in our, in our area, east central area, as a total package. And so continuing that, keep raising the bar, I think we'll keep retaining teachers and other things.
All right. Thank you. Second question will go to Darren. What is your stance on inclusion of arts and humanities in the curriculum, and how will you ensure these subjects are adequately supported?
I think they're vital. I was a band member, my wife was, my kids have been. Band, choir, all the art classes in general are vital to not only broadening our students' horizons, but it's been shown that those students who participate in those types of activities have a well-rounded education at the end. We need to look at some of the upcoming changes to the diploma tracks and talk with the state and keep them apprised of how we feel going forward with those and making sure that the arts are included in those diploma tracks.
All right. Jeremy, same question. What, what is your stance on inclusion of arts and humanities in the curriculum, and how would you ensure these subjects are adequately supported?
Yeah, I'm in favor of keeping them inclusion. We definitely need it. What I've found over the years, especially coming from myself in the manufacturing field, is a lot of people that came from that background, very creative minded, they think outside of the box a little more than some of the others. And those are the things that, characteristics that we need in all fields of study, fields of employment. So with that, I think we have to keep pressure on the state to maintain those kind of programs for us and at whatever cost it needs to do.
All right. Thank you. Dustin, same question. What is your stance on the inclusion of arts and humanities in the curriculum, and how will you ensure these subjects are adequately supported?
I agree. I think that we need to, we need to make sure that they stay. The students that do all of those, they're very disciplined because of just the time it takes to learn and make sure that they're at the top of their game for it. So whatever we need to do with the state to try to make sure that it stays.
All right. Thank you. Next question will be for Jeremy. How will you address issues related to bullying and mental health support within the schools?
Okay. That's a big issue that's still going on for us, especially with the new generation. I think by, some of the biggest thing is education among the students and parents as well, on how to handle conflict and differences. Additionally, we can look at increasing resources for, you know, counselors and stuff, people like that with the, with the skill sets, and just, you know, continuing education on and trying to prevent it from happening.
All right. Same question now to you, Dustin. How will you address issues of bullying and mental health support within the schools?
I believe that the students, when they're causing trouble, they need to be, there needs to be some kind of structure that you do, whenever you cause problems, you need to go see counselors and see if they can't work it out. Call the families, sit down, talk to the families with them, see if you can figure out what the root of the cause is, and try to get them to straighten out on it. And, and then if all else fails, maybe have to remove them if they're not gonna, because you can't interrupt the rest of the students' learning if they're not gonna, if you can't get a corrective behavior out of it.
Thank you. Same question, Darren. How will you address issues of bullying and mental health support within the schools?
I think the addition of additional counselors, where we can put those in, would be a key component. I believe that the, the new cell phone policy that the state passed has given a help to the situation. However, once kids are outside of school, that can continue. So just, again, continuing education, not only for the students, but for parents and administrators as well.
Thank you. Dustin, how would you handle conflicts and disagreements among board members or between the board and the administration?
Well, I mean, we're all grown adults, so you can, you take their opinion, see what they're seeing it from their side, you explain your side, and if it's going to come down to something isn't a vote, then you just vote the way that you believe is right for the students and to help make sure our education's there.
All right. Darren, how would you handle conflicts and disagreements among board members or between the board and the administration?
I think in, in any group, you're always going to have some sort of disagreement or somebody's not going to see the same, something the same way you do. I think, again, like Dustin just said, conversation, getting to the root of what the difference is, and if you can't come to an agreement on, on a path forward, then just simply agree to disagree and move on.
All right. Thank you. And finally here, same question. Jeremy, how would you handle conflicts and disagreements among board members or between the board and the administration?
I agree with both those guys. They're, and as professionals on the board, you know, with respect to people, we're supposed to bring morals and morals, values, and ethics to the table. With that, we bring, we have conversations, we sit down, we discuss it, we take each other's opinion, but sometimes we do it in a private manner. We don't use any other sector of that. And then once we come to agreement, we have an easier decision to make between each other. We are correct, sometimes we do not agree, and that's why you have a board of seven or you have multiple people in the admin. But yes, you, we work it out between each other.
All right. Thank you. Final question will, will go to you, Jeremy. What experience or background do you have that you believe will contribute to your effectiveness as a school board member?
Okay. I have well over 25 years of manufacturing background, actually probably more like 35 to be specific. With that, I bring back, you know, capex, budgeting background, working with different people of different skill sets, different education levels. A lot of the things that some of the other people may not necessarily have in their, their background, but that is one thing that I do bring. I could also bring that a lot of the manufacturing sector, I see what is needed out there, what skill sets, what education is needed from the students from when they're in school and when they're out of school as well.
All right. Thank you, Darren. What experience, excuse me, Dustin, what experience or background do you have that you believe will contribute to your effectiveness as a school board member?
We own our own family business, so I understand like budgeting and those aspects. I'm a career fireman, so we see a lot as far as education goes for all types of situations. Very quick and responsive to be able to figure out a way to correct whatever issues. So I think that'll be a good help to the board.
All right. Thank you. And finally, Darren, what experience or background do you have that you believe will contribute to your effectiveness as a school board member?
Having seven children go through our school system has been a big help. Continuing to be, if I can attend the meetings, watching them on, on Channel 3 or on YouTube. I've worked with the public for over 40 years, so I understand the dichotomy between what the public thinks and what is actually able to happen with the school board. So I think I, bringing an understanding of how that works to the board would be a strength for me.
All right. Thank you. And finally, I guess that's all three of you answered that. Getting late here. Time for closing statements, and Darren, we'll start with you.
Okay. Again, my name is Darren Price, school board candidate for District Three. I just appreciate your support come November.
All right. Jeremy?
Again, I'm seeking reelection. Currently been on, like I said, this, this term. I'm proud to say we've made some big, big strides and improvements in the corporation. We've got a plan that's in place and it's continuing for infrastructure improvements, also for teacher retention, you know, improvements. And with my background, the way it has with manufacturing and other areas, I think that brings a strong asset to the position. I also believe that we need to have a diverse school board that gives us the, the decision-making skill set that we need. And finally, I'm also just a big believer that, and parents' rights and reasonable, that, you know, a few years ago, we went through the, as we all know, the COVID and all that, and it should never be taken away from the parents, as who has a choice on, on the decisions for their children. So I'm a big proponent of that, and that's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Closing statement for you.
My name is Dustin Munson. I'm running for school board District Three. If you want a fresh outlook, some transparency, vote for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Remind everybody that District Three, two will be elected out of District Three, and there are, are seven, seven people running. So here are three of them, and I'm sure that they entertain any questions you might, if you see them out, that they may have, and appreciate you all. Thank you all for being with us this evening. And again, we would like to thank, or we'd like to remind the viewers that early voting begins at the courthouse on October 8th, and Election Day is Tuesday, November 5th. Voting centers will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. and are located at Baptist Temple Gymnasium, New Heights Church, the Miller Center Banquet Hall, and the Keener Building in Everton, and at the Fayette County Courthouse. Have a pleasant evening and good night.